Good evening, everyone. Is this your last meeting, Daryl? I thought you said you were all done with us.
Oh, this is my last meeting. February is the rollover.
Gotcha. One more time to keep us all in line, eh?
Yeah, one more time to not figure out why the Zoom link isn't working.
I remember the first time I had to put in the actual passcode today. I don't know what was going on. Maybe I was logged in something weird, so feel your pain.
You'd think we'd all be, you know, Zoom experts by this, at this point, but yeah, somehow it's not working out that way.
I don't want to be a Zoom expert.
Yeah, me neither.
Wait, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, I can, Shelley.
Yeah, when you actually start meeting, and I may have to come sit in the corner just to, you know, experience an actual meeting, I kind of forgot what a physical meeting is like. I love your background, by the way.
Yeah, definitely have rotated through the cities ones that they have on their website, but.
It looks kind of 60s, 60s. 60s look to it.
Yeah, it's the Grow Gather mural. I was at the Judy had sent, or told us about the Chamber Commerce Meeting week or two ago, and I didn't realize that we had done a like a bar crawl from all and to connect to all the murals because there's so many different restaurants and bars that have murals around around the city. And it was kind of one of the events that they had, like go from one location with the mural to another one. So I'll have to check that one out next time.
Cool.
Is that one of the other ones, Wade, that you can get off your guys' site, or is that one of your own personal taking? You are muted, though.
Sorry. I searched on City of Englewood and went to images and then just saved it.
So that is okay. I know they've got the one kind of looking across the bridge. I don't know if I remember seeing that one.
Okay.
So that way you can see your office. I guess it's not quite your office would be to the chair left there.
To the, yeah. There's Shelley. Can you hear me, Shelley?
I can. I had to get on my laptop. My computer wasn't working properly.
We don't have a chair, so.
Okay.
Michelle Austin is not in yet, so.
What do we need to do?
Well, she is our vice chair and acting chair, so we do not have a vice chair.
Okay. Do you know if she was coming, or did she confirm a Nancy, or?
I have not heard if she was or not.
Okay, can you give me one moment and I will, I will check.
Yep.
Is Nancy transitioning out, or is she just not here tonight?
The city had a Urban Renewal Authority Board meeting this evening, and she is at that meeting, so it's just, just for this evening that we have Shelley.
Thanks.
Yep.
We can go ahead and take roll call. And then wait if you want to select somebody to run the meeting, be chair, you can do that.
All right.
Okay, Kate Townley. Darrell Kitten. I see Darrell.
He's here.
Sorry, I'm mute.
That's okay. Callin'.
Here.
Judy Brown.
Here.
Diane Lepovski, sorry, Miss Snow.
Lepavski, no problem. I'm here.
Noel Atkins.
Here.
Carl Adams.
Here.
Chair Austin. We do have a quorum.
Just because Darrell, we have as a senior.
Darrell, you are our senior member. Would you like to go out with a bang and chair the last meeting?
Sure.
Okay.
Barring any technical difficulties, I'll be happy to.
Do we want to approve of minutes?
Let me see here. Bring up the minutes.
Do we have to officially open the meeting if I forget as I just, or is it just a roll call?
Wade?
It's just a roll.
Yeah.
Need a motion to approve the minutes and a second.
A motion to approve.
A second.
And you need to vote.
Mr. Hagerty?
Uh, yes.
Ms. Fuller?
Yes.
Diane?
Yeah.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Kitten?
Yes.
Minutes are approved.
And Shelley, what's next on the agenda? I don't have an agenda. I apologize.
Public forum.
Forum.
Do we have anybody from the public?
Shelley, is there anybody? I don't.
I don't think so.
I don't see any attendees.
I don't see anybody. No. And you're up next, Wade.
Okay. Going to share my screen here. So we're going to this evening present to you the initial report out for the Unified Development Code Assessment and Community Engagement Facilitation Project. Before we get into the full PowerPoint presentation, I do want to say a few words. Basically, give you a recap of what we've done, where we've been. And then I will turn it over to Jennifer Gardner, who is the project planner for Logan Simpson, who assisted us through this process. We also have Mark White and Reese Wilson on the line, who also helped us out with this project, so. By way of introduction, I just wanted to say that this project was split into three phases. The first phase focused on really listening to the community. There were numerous ways that were created for people throughout the community to engage in the conversation. The project team was focused on really listening and learning about what was working well, what was not working well, and identifying areas that needed to be highlighted for further discussion in the community's opinion. During this time, the project team, as I mentioned, listened to ideas and we really took time to try to reach as many people as possible. This was not a time to for staff to really go out and lecture on the details of the code to really provide, you know, as I said, lectures on the code and talk about details about specific projects and that sort of format. The purpose and intended outcome, as I mentioned, was for the community to provide us input that can be utilized moving forward into future phases of the project. Attached to your packet this evening, we did include the Community Outreach Report, which shows you all of the venues and opportunities the community had to provide feedback to the project team. So in an effort to be transparent and accessible, the final report does contain the input we collected at each event, and the information will be included as an addendum to the final report, which you will get a copy here in a few weeks. As we wrapped up our Phase One effort of the project and moved into Phase Two, the project team quickly learned that several topics were really rising to the top based on the amount of comments and questions and information we were hearing from the community. So Phase Two attempted to dive deeper into these common topics, and the top, common topics really broke out into six different categories. So the first one was residential neighborhood dimensional and design standards. The second was neighborhood character and preservation. The third is housing attainability. The fourth, parking standards and walkability. The fifth is sustainability, and the sixth is general Unified Development Code organization and layout for ease of use. So as we're going along in the process, please remember that none of the phases really ever closed until January 4. So while we transitioned into Phase Two, Phase One was still open, and we would and have accepted comments of any nature at any time during the process. So further efforts to reach the community during Phase Two saw us push out some quick poll surveys. We did a postcard mailing to Englewood mailing addresses and had a second Zoom community meeting to listen to the feedback on these common thread topics that I just listed and try to answer as many questions as we could about those topics, as well as answer any other questions that people had through Phase One. So Phase Three of the project really focused on the assessment of the code. The last comprehensive rewrite of the UDC was in 2004. And since then, piecemeal changes have occurred, and in 2017, the city adopted the Englewood Forward Comprehensive Plan. And in 2020, City Council adopted its strategic plan for the next few years as well. So the Unified Development Code arguably is what is the strongest tool that the city has in its toolbox to implement the policies and goals found within these documents and to guide development over the next decade. The Englewood Forward established the vision for the city's land use, but also serving as a policy document containing direction for the development of Englewood over the next 10 years. The first sentence of the Comprehensive Plan states, "Englewood Forward is a comprehensive land use plan that represents the city's values, organized into unique, character-oriented neighborhood areas. And the plan envisions the future of Englewood by identifying location of stability, transition, and change within the community." So this process that we have been on since late summer was not an effort to rewrite the comprehensive plan in any means. It was an effort rather to implement the plan and the visions set forth within it. So the last phase of this project summarizes the major views identified by the public, city staff, and the project management team over the course of the entire outreach project. So while the input and analysis of the issues you're going to hear about tonight sometimes drilled down into specifics regarding particular regulations, the report really presents overarching issues within the current Unified Development Code. The, in order to stimulate discussion, the project team brought in ideas and code regulations from other jurisdictions to see if those may be a fit for Englewood. We asked questions to gain feedback, and we utilized a steering committee of community members to be our sounding board to garner further input and to really reach out into the community and make the community aware of the project and get further ideas and input, as I mentioned. The final report that you're going to hear about tonight, you're going to hear suggestions and possible options to consider as we move forward, and areas to pay special attention to during the rewrite of the Unified Development Code, which is the next step. The report does not prescribe or recommend the direction for the new code, and it's very important to remember that there is no language that has been drafted and no decisions have been made. The final report can be thought of strictly as a blueprint for the redrafting of the new code. And as we all know, this is a lengthy process, and we're really focused on proceeding in the right way correctly and not quickly. This rewrite of the Unified Development Code will live with the community for many, many years. And so, as I mentioned, we want to get it right and not get it done quick. So one of the main points as we start out is to understand that this report does not represent the end of the conversation on any of these topics. So this is just the beginning. So as I mentioned, the, the final draft report is going to be released to City Council and discussed at their meeting on February 8. The Planning and Zoning Commission will also receive the full document at that time, and we do plan to have the topic on the agenda at Planning and Zoning Commission's February 17th meeting for any additional conversation. So you know, in talking a little bit more about the report, you know, the report is laid out by types of different zonings. Some of you have heard about form-based code, you know, there's the Quidian zoning, which Englewood primarily has. So there's going to be an introduction of the different types of zonings the community use, uses. There are guiding principles, then general suggestions and options to consider by chapter within the Unified Development Code, and we'll go through those this evening in a little bit more detail. So this is what I mentioned, the types of zoning includes, so you have performance-based zoning, conventional overlays. We've been talking a lot recently about overlays for the city center project, planned unit developments. So as a way of background, the report will give you more information on each one of these types of zonings for your information and consideration as we move through. So the code update also comes with some guiding principles. So we did this to really provide a comprehensive framework for development. We want to ensure that the code is user-friendly. The code should have community support. It should make the right things easy, and the code should also reflect best practices. The final document will have an addendum of other communities both in Colorado as well as nationally. Best practices, for example, with regard to parking, with regard to walkability. So there's going to, this is going to be sort of like a research document for you to use. If you want to find out more about a certain topic, we'll have an addendum within the final report. So we also want to make sure to right-size the standards and procedures within the code. Are there things that are very, are overly complicated? I can tell you that our sign code is overly complicated. There are things with regard to telecommunications that need to be worked, so we need to make sure those standards and procedures really fit Englewood. The code should balance flexibility and certainty for everyone using it. There should be clear and fluid administrative processes for applications. We should avoid nonconformities and provide enforcement tools as we go through. So those are our 10 guiding principles that when we get into the redraft, we want to make sure we, we pay attention to. So at this point, I think if Jennifer Gardner would like to walk through more of this, I would turn it over to her at this time. Jen, are you?
Yeah, I'm, I'm here. Can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Okay, good. All right. Um, I know Kate and Diane have already seen a lot of this before, but for the rest of you, this will be new. Thank you for that great lead-in, Wade. That was, that was excellent. So generally throughout the whole code document, we have about four things that we recommend. So, um, generally throughout the whole code document, we have about four things that we recommend. One is simplifying technical language. We heard quite a bit throughout the process that although this is a legal document, we heard quite a bit throughout the process that there is a lot of pieces and parts of the code that are hard to understand to the everyday person or really anyone. So, you know, simplifying that technical language, renaming procedures for clarity and simplification, modernizing definitions and terms throughout the document. Those are some of the, some of the general simplification items that we, we would suggest. So, next slide, please. Another way to modernize codes, make them a little simpler, a little more user-friendly is to add tables, charts, and graphics. There are very few graphics in the current code. Um, so we recommend integrating graphics throughout the code to illustrate dimensional relationships and help explain some of the material, sometimes, you know, pictures worth a thousand words. So sometimes you can put a bunch of words in a paragraph and that picture just helps kind of seal the deal. So, um, that's one of the other suggestions. Uh, next slide. We'll get into this a little bit more through the chapter-by-chapter recommendations or suggestions. But generally speaking, sometimes it's, it's helpful to reorganize a couple of pieces of the document to make it flow a little bit easier. So zoning regulations could be put, zoning regulations that put technical provisions in the back of the document and keep the more substantive provisions to the front of the document. So when you, when you're going to develop, you know, an ADU or a full property, you can open the document and walk straight through, here's my zoning, here's what I need to do, here's the design standards. And then some of the technical information is at the back end. So that's just one, one option is to move some of the chapter two regulations to the back of the code, some of the interpretation zoning map, some of that kind of upfront technical language could go to the back of the code. We could add an executive summary at the front of the first chapter. And then we'll get into this again a little bit more, but telecommunications sits in its own chapter and it could be integrated into chapter five. That's kind of where it seems to fit with the use regulations. So next chapter, or I mean, next, next page, slide. Um, integrating cross-references is the fourth and final kind of general suggestion. Uh, so cross-references and integration of terms throughout the document to minimize confusion. And then oftentimes we recommend or suggest that people, communities pull in some of the comprehensive plan language. So certain purpose statements could be placed in throughout the document, italicized and very specific that it's just creating that tie between the comprehensive plan and the code to show how, how the comprehensive plan has been integrated and implemented through the code document. So, uh, next slide. So now we're going to go through, there's 11 chapters in the current Inglewood Unified Development Code. And we went through, basically what we did is we took all of the public comment in those five main topics that we discussed through phase two and did a, a full top-to-bottom review of the code with our team, with staff, and then against all of the comments that we heard and combined, combined them all into the right places of the, of the chapters where they kind of fit. So, um, chapter one is your general provisions, like I said previously. Uh, one suggestion is to move the zoning map rules of, and of construction and interpretation to the rear of the document. And then add contact ten to the front of the document that ties to the Inglewood Forward Comprehensive Plan. Another observation was that there are some and/or conjunctions throughout the code, especially in the beginning, and removing those for interpretation conflicts. Next slide. Chapter two is your development review and approval procedures. Again, one suggestion would be to move this to the rear of the document. When, when you, when you go to apply for an application, you know, you'd have all your front-end information and you're, you're going to seek out this information either way. So creating a process for, and a, a process and standards for interpretations. Revising the PUD language to include stringent standards that exceed development. So sometimes PUDs are used as kind of a, there's this, this particular development doesn't fit in this zone perfectly. So a PUD is a way to make that happen. Our suggestion would be the PUD would be a true overlay. You meet the base zoning district requirements and then you have to exceed those for that PUD. So just a, just a suggestion, a lot of communities have, have moved to more of that approach. Revising the public hearing process to allow applicants to respond to public comments. So there was a, a bit of a discussion with, with internally with staff about the public hearing process and allowing for both the public to comment on applications and the applicant to have adequate time to respond to those applications or those comments. And then provide a time limit for zoning variances so that an applicant cannot reapply within a year. Next slide. Zone districts, uh, we're actually in pretty good shape. We didn't hear a whole lot about the districts themselves needing much. So we, you can see, uh, Inglewood sits at about 61% in residential zoning, 11% in commercial, 23% industrial, and 3% PUD. So we, we would make the recommendation or suggestion to just revise those introductory statements in each zone district to make it very clear what the intent of each zone district is. And make sure that corresponds with the goals identified in the Comprehensive Plan. So, next slide. Chapter four was floodplain regulations. Again, not a whole lot to be done with this chapter. It was in pretty good shape. So with the, in chapter five, the use regulations, when we get into that next, there would be, there's some suggested tweaks of just updating and modernizing a lot of the uses. So we would have to make sure that the floodplain regulations corresponds with any changes made to those uses and then ensuring this chapter is flexible and easy to amend as FEMA regulations change over time, which does happen pretty regularly. Next, chapter five is the use regulations. This one, we actually have two slides. There was just a few additional comments on this one, but one suggestion is an update and reorganization of the use chart. There are, like I said, a lot of uses that are maybe out of, the language might be a little out of date, maybe need modernizing. So modernizing the specific use standards for manufactured home parks was another topic that came up. Reclassifying limited uses and accessory uses as permitted, conditional accessory or temporary. So basically kind of eliminating, eliminating that limited use category and kind of redefining some of the use categories. Um, and then revising and clarifying automotive uses, there was some, so not necessarily conflict, but some confusion and just, there's, there's a lot of language in the automotive uses. And so kind of simplifying and condensing that and, and clarifying a bit. So, uh, next slide. Also, um, the ADU use definitions. Need, we suggest they be updated to provide standards tailored to specific neighborhoods or zone districts. We heard a lot about ADUs throughout the entire public outreach process. So you'll see them mentioned in a couple of different chapters. There's a section on adaptive reuse in this chapter and chapter five. And we recommend moving that to be combined with the historic preservation chapter. Incorporate more flexibility within home occupations. We did hear quite a bit about home occupations throughout the process. I think part of that is, is COVID kind of spurred some discussion. But looking at some different, various types of at-home situations that might, that the home occupations might be expanded to include. Um, and then revising language and stipulations for food vending trucks within the temporary use section. Next. Chapter six is actually divided up into several slides. This is our development standards. And there is quite a bit in this chapter. It's, it's a very, very dense chapter, very, very important chapter as well. So, um, so we broke it down into dimensional requirements. The, the different portions of the chapter are dimensional requirements, streets and vehicle access and circulation, off-street parking, pedestrian and bicycle access, fence and retaining walls, landscaping and screening, design standards and guidelines, historic preservation, signs, and the TSA district. So we're going to go through each of those. So bear with me. But within the dimensional requirements, uh, one suggestion that came up is the small lot widths in all residential zones to be changed to 37 foot within the dimensional table. It actually is at 37 feet in several locations within that table, but there was just one or two lines that were not consistent. So it's just updating to make sure there's consistency within that small lot width requirement. Simplifying the ADU dimensional table and include new ADU types and appropriate regulations. Uh, so again, in response to a lot of the comments on ADUs, just expanding the opportunities of it. Adjusting bulk rate plane requirements and tailoring them to specific neighborhoods or zone districts. Our recommendation or suggestion on this one is that the, uh, we heard quite a bit about dimensional standards, bulk plane setbacks. We came up with several best practices and, and optional approaches. And our suggestion would be to through the rewrite process, assess this a little bit further with the community. So put out some, some detailed options and, and kind of come up with a good solution for that. So, next slide. Uh, streets and vehicle access, primarily just making sure that they reflect current public work standards. Um, and maybe a suggestion of encouraging shared drive access for adjacent, adjacent non-residential development to discourage unnecessary drive cuts and reduce congestion. So not a whole lot to do with that section. Next, off-street parking. We heard a lot about off-street parking and have had some really great conversations with the community, with our steering committee, internally with staff. And some of the suggestions that came out of this, um, again, like, like Wade said, these are all just suggestions, all based in best practices and what other communities are doing. But it will be necessary through the full code update process or code rewrite process to assess some of these and figure out which are the best for, right size for, for Inglewood. So, um, one option is revising the parking standards to include parking maximums and minimums. Right now, there's just a parking minimum, which is a fairly high number. And so this would allow, this would make that minimum potentially, one option would be to make that minimum a maximum and then provide a minimum. So there's a range depending on your development type. You have a little more flexibility in the, in the amount of parking that you would be required. Establish a soft parking maximum is another option that triggers additional requirements when spaces are increased. Um, addressing parking spillover in residential areas with parking permit systems. We heard a bit of a mixed bag on the parking permit. We've heard some, a lot of people really liked it and, and some people said there was enough permitted parking in the city. So, um, we do, we do throw that suggestion out there lightly as, as an option. Reduce overparking by using site-specific parking demand analysis. Heard actually a lot of good response to, to that idea. Um, and then tie the location and size of parking areas to landscaping and shading requirements. And we'll get into that a little bit further with some of our green infrastructure ideas. Next, bicycle and pedestrian access. So one, one suggestion is to increase planting strip requirements from six to 10 feet to encourage more green and open space planting. Since we put this slide, slide presentation together and then met with our steering committee, we've been kind of tweaking the, the final report a little bit. And we're talking a little bit more, thanks to a couple of steering committee members about not necessarily just increasing that width, but also thinking about the soil mass that's needed for, for plant material. So sometimes in an urban environment, it's not a matter of the width of the planting area, but the soil space. And you might have like floating sidewalks and things like that. So, um, providing some, some flexibility within that would be a suggestion. Creating contextual design standards for walkways, bus stops, transit locations, providing flexible incentives depending on less parking. So like we just saw on the last slide, tying parking to bicycle and pedestrian and green infrastructure. So there can be some trade-offs and incentives there. And then providing lighting requirements for connectivity purposes. Um, fences and retaining walls, there really wasn't a lot in, in this section that needed a, a ton of updating, but some suggestions would be contextualizing standards, particularly heights by zone district or neighborhood. Updating the site triangle illustrations, the site triangle illustrations show up in fences. And then one other section of the code. And one suggestion we had would be to pull those more to a front end or to a measurements type section and just reference it in, in these other two sections so that there doesn't end up being any conflict between those. Um, and then supplement table 16 dash 6 dash 6 dot point one fence classifications with colored images. So again, just bringing some more graphics in to, to help illustrate the standards. Next slide. Landscaping and screening, again, this, this section was in pretty good shape. So just building on that, uh, some suggestions would be to create a, an approved plant list. And that could be an actual list of plants or it could just be referencing something like CSU Extensions Approved Tree List or something to that effect. Expanding the water conservation principles and creating standards to support that. Intensifying landscape requirements for non-residential zones to provide more trees, shrub and grasses. Develop specific landscape, site landscape standards or requirements and consider adding a minimum open space requirement for some zone districts. So these are just some suggestions that came out that could elevate, uh, the existing great standards. Next slide. A little bit more on landscaping. Oftentimes in a, in a fairly built-out urban environment such as Inglewoods, we can, we've worked with other communities to substitute civic spaces and usable open spaces for required landscaping. So provide a, almost a menu of options of different types of open space rather than you have to have so many acres of open space for so many acres of development. So provide some, some options there. A developing pedestrian-oriented streetscape standards for mixed use and the TSA district. Consider a minimum landscape requirement for front yards and then using a sliding scale for landscape percentages with. Anyway, just, just a sliding scale to, it, it kind of ties to that first, first item of civic spaces and just integrating open space into a built-urban environment. Next slide. Uh, design standards and guidelines. So based on our conversation of the kind of neighborhood-specific type design guidelines, some suggestions would be to strengthen the residential design standards to ensure quality home development. Develop specific residential design standards for each zone district or neighborhood. Um, and then expand the neighborhood preservation standards to other neighborhoods. So there is one neighborhood preservation overlay zone in the M U R 3B. That could be expanded out to other areas or have additional neighborhood preservation overlays. So again, some, some suggestions to try to tie to the Comprehensive Plans, neighborhood character goals and policies. Next. Historic preservation. The Historic Preservation Commission is working right now to develop a demolition permit and is doing a neighborhood-by-neighborhood assessment. So, um, in addition to that, to help kind of give them a little bit more teeth for, for historic preservation review, some suggestions would be to establish a certificate of appropriateness review for, for historic properties and provide regulations for the demolition of historic properties that would tie to that demolition permit process. So, next slide. Signs, as Wade said, the sign code portion of, of the code is very lengthy and convoluted. So realign sign types to zoning districts or street classifications rather than land uses is one suggestion. Providing clear and effective graph, graphics and matrices. And then incorporating sign definitions into the definitions chapter of the code rather than in here would help kind of condense this chapter a bit. And the TSA district, uh, one, one idea was to incorporate the content into other sections of the code. And the TSA district, one, one idea was to incorporate the content into other sections of the code. There's some really great design guidelines in this district. So kind of just spreading that out throughout the code where it's appropriate. And then implementing compact, walkable and or transit oriented development standards to provide some design flexibility, green infrastructure, landscaping, that type of thing. Telecommunications, like we said before, this, this chapter is uh telecommunications has, has moved very quickly with small cell facilities and, and a lot of different technologies. So this section would need to be updated to modern technology and terminology. And again, it sits alone right now and it makes sense to possibly incorporate it into the use regulations or as a separate appendix at the back of the document. Chapter eight subdivision design improvements and dedication standards. Again, not, not a whole lot in this chapter was, it was in pretty good shape. So revising land dedication amounts required to reflect the type of improvement through a menu of park and open space options. So kind of like I talked about before, being a built out community, maybe providing a little bit of more flexibility within that. And then aligning the street classification system with the comprehensive plan. Chapter nine, non-conformities. There was one, one section that just needs some clarification basically on redevelopment of non-conforming buildings or structures with infill standards to reduce newly rehabilitated non-conformities. Enforcement and penalties. We suggested retaining the existing enforcement and penalties regulations, but simplifying the language and verifying cross-references to the city's municipal code. And chapter eleven, use classifications and definitions. It's kind of goes with the territory whenever you update a code that the definitions will need to be updated to reflect any new or revised content throughout the document. So you know, including new and revised definitions as needed, modernizing the use classifications and definitions. And verifying revised, revised definitions comply with state law. So the definition section typically kind of gets combed through as the code is being updated. But a lot of times, most of us wait kind of to the end and just make sure everything that we've incorporated make, is, is updated in the definitions chapter. All right. And that is what is in the report and what we came up with. So we are currently finalizing the report. And as Wade said, there are a ton of appendices at the moment to really put all of the public outreach feedback that we heard just right there at the, in the, in the document. And then we have a pretty lengthy section on case studies from across the country for, for use in the code rewrite process. We will be heading to town council on, or city council on February eighth. And then I, I think back to you guys, Wade said on February seventeenth. So I am here, Mark and Reese and I are here to take any questions you have.
Yeah, I know that, that's a lot of information for everybody in a very short amount of time. So we're here, as Jen said, for, for any questions you have initially for us. And Shelley, I'll need you to. Colin, you have your hand.
That was a, a ton of information, but really appreciate that summary and what you guys are, are working on at this point. And kind of some, again, summarizing those next steps. A couple of things I, I just caught and I wanted to make sure I clarified. You said the minimum lot width of going to thirty seven feet consistently. I thought when I was looking through that it was twenty five feet in most places. And so I just, I guess, wanted to make sure that that was the correct width on there. And I very well may have read it wrong, but as I was scanning through. And I don't know if anybody knows that off the top of their head.
I did just look this up recently and we could pull it up and, and look at it. I remember there are a few dimensions that are at thirty seven feet. And there was, it was really just one or two specific lines that were not consistent, but
Okay.
we, we can pull that up here.
And maybe it's just a kind of double check and then, and I thought I had looked at one of the tables. And then maybe I guess as you're looking, the, the shared drive access. Is that, is that between shared lots? How was, how would that work or how is it different than maybe what's going on right now? If it has a single lot, is there just a certain number of driveways that could happen?
Yeah. And so that's more towards commercial development. So to increase walkability and bikeability. And so anytime a redevelopment happens, if there's a, you know, driveways, driveway curb cuts, I'm just going to throw a dimension out there. Say they're only about a hundred feet apart or something. And there's a way to combine them to increase effectiveness of, of traffic and, you know, increase that pedestrian environment. That's, that's just a suggestion that we would make.
And then I guess the last question for increasing the planting strip width. I, I think the property owners have to maintain that that wouldn't put an extra burden on the city to have a wider area that they would be responsible for, anything like that?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Darryl, you were next.
Yeah, I was just, one thing I thought of, and this isn't as much of a problem in Inglewood as it is in, in some other places in the, in the, in the region. But I just wondered if it had come across any of these issues with maintaining the area around bus stops or where bus shelters are and access for bus. Just something I thought of when, you know, you're talking about pedestrian and bicycle access. Wondered if that came up or there was any place where you think that might be appropriate to create, you know, standards that, that would encourage a more favorable environment for bus stops. For instance, like some places, you know, you can't really get from the bus stop to the street to access the bus, that sort of thing.
Yeah. So that's absolutely something that could be incorporated in the code is making sure that that clear access is there from the bus stop to the bus and a clear access from the pedestrian sidewalk to the bus stop as well. So
Right. Sometimes the sidewalks don't link up with the bus stop and that kind of thing.
Right. Yep.
And the other thing is I, I just wondered with obviously you guys, ton of stuff. I mean, was there anything that you felt like you didn't get to that, that you would have liked to? Or maybe, maybe it's a huge list of things. I don't know.
Actually, no, I feel like through our public outreach and we walked through pretty much word for word through the entire document with staff. I feel like we had a very, by the time, like by now, I feel like we have a very good handle for what is in the code, what isn't in the code. And so, yeah, I, I feel like we were able to discuss pretty much everything. Everything that I could foresee or anticipate.
Good, good. It's very comprehensive and I, I, I do want to emphasize, I also like the, looking at the emphasis on the, the, the green strip. And I don't think, Eli, as you said, it's not so much as important on the specific width of it. Just that it, that it's in there and that it not be one of those things that you, you know, it's like, well, it's a nice thing to have, but you know, we, you know, too many exceptions would be my only concern with that. But I think it's, it's definitely something desirable to put in there.
Thanks, Darryl. Diane?
Um, I got to participate in a couple of the steering committee meetings. And so I just, I want to say thank you for putting together such nice, clear presentations and, and developing these conversations with not just us, but you know, community members at large. I'm so glad that the planting became such a big thing. And I did notice in there that it looked the same as before. So I appreciate you saying that the soil volume is what you were kind of tweaking the report to reflect. But Colin's comment, I, I didn't quite catch the answer. Could, could you repeat? Is, in most jurisdictions, to my understanding, the city would plant and maintain or the plant, the trees, but the homeowner or a property owner would then be required to water and care for it. Is that correct?
Yeah, it de, it depends on where that parks trip lies, actually, to be honest with you. If it's wholly in the right of way, then that's technically city property. And some cities, like City of Fort Collins, they plant and maintain the trees, but then the homeowner maintains the ground, the ground plane. And that's if it's in the right of way, anything from the right of way into the property is the property owner's responsibility. So with that particular suggestion, I think it would have to be, again, just looked at a little more detail with the final code update to see where, how that would affect properties. If it would all be in the, in the right of way or if it would be onto the property and then that would affect the maintenance. But our, our intention is not to, to increase maintenance for the city particularly. It's to increase the permeability and the shade and, and the, the walkability and all of that. So it's, it's, it's a, it's a balance, I think, that would have to be looked at one step further before the regulation is fully put into place.
Yeah, no, that's, that's totally understandable. In any case, thank you for putting us together.
My pleasure. And I did find our chart on the dimensions, if we wanted to go back to that question.
Yeah.
So it appears in the R one C, the one unit dwelling on a small lot says thirty seven feet. And then if you go down to R two A, one unit dwelling on a small lot is a forty foot minimum lot width. And I believe that was where the conflict occurred.
I, I was gonna say, because it does look like in R one A, the small lot is fifty foot. And R one B, small lot is fifty foot also.
And then you go to thirty seven and then to forty. So I think it was just making sure there was consistency within that small lot variable.
So will that be across all residential districts that, that will switch to thirty seven feet? Or will it stay fifty in the R one A and R one B?
I think, as, as I recall from the conversation, I think the fifty in R one A and R one B was fine. It was that R two A that where the, where the, the, it was just a red flag that went up and we said, hmm, maybe we should take a look at that. So again, it, it'll, we'll have to have one more, one more look. It was just a, a, an observation and kind of a suggestion to take a look at that and make sure that maybe it's the thirty seven dimension that's off, you know, it's just, there, there's a little inconsistency in there.
Thank you.
Yep. Fight Knowles next.
Thanks. I think we got a lot of great feedback from the community. Looking forward to, to digging through more of it. And one thing I noticed when some of the ideas, you know, there will be an increased cost or some cost associated whether to the, the city or to the resident or, you know, any of the other parties. Is there going to be an estimation of what those costs will look like that will be part of this process?
Not a part of this assessment process, but maybe Wade can speak to that. But typically as part of an update process, you, you know, the consultant could look into that.
Yeah, yeah, no, I think that's a good idea. We are in the process of, of drafting the RFP for the actual rewrite. So that is something we will look at include, look to include for that actual rewrite to, to, to provide some estimates of, of cost for either applicants or the city or whomever.
Great, thanks.
Colin?
Colin.
I did have just one more follow-up question, the, the neighborhood preservation. I guess is, so that's in the M U R three B currently. I guess I, I would have thought that would have been in one of the residential districts like Arapahoe Acres. Is there not preservation in any of those right now?
No, there is not.
Okay.
And that's one of the, one of our, one of our conversation topics throughout this was, you know, areas such as Arapahoe Acres or other areas, should they, should they have a neighborhood protection or preservation overlay or something of that nature? That helps give standards currently, Arapahoe Acres is obviously a historic district, but there aren't any, any standards for redevelopment or anything. So it, it would be very helpful for that area especially.
Thank you. I just had a follow-up question as well, actually to, one to Noel's question. So would you imagine that the cost estimates would be? I don't, I, I mean, I guess it could vary so widely depending on what the issue is. But if it were tree lawns, it would be by square foot or something like that. You know, it would be maybe hard to evaluate in some cases. What are your thoughts on that, Wade?
Yeah. I would say it would be kind of a magnitude of costs, kind of an idea personally.
Yeah. My other question was a little bit to something you said very early on Wade, which is that this is this is the starting point to the conversation. So when you say that, we've, we've gathered all of this feedback from the community and, you know, steering committee members and various business owners and developers and the like. So when the conversation continues, does that, do you mean primarily at the city council level or the planning level or like the community will continue to provide a lot of additional input? Or do you, how do you see that?
Yeah, we, we envision workshops on, on these main theme topics. So, you know, we have a lot more to talk about with regard to parking. How do we best handle parking? How do we best handle neighborhood design and setbacks and bulk plane? So not only on planning level and city council level, but yes, there will be more public participation and probably more specific topic related events. So we can really narrow down some of this stuff when, as we go into the rewrite. So yes, there, there will be additional outreach in that fashion. As the RFP is being drafted right now, you know, the planning and zoning commission may play a larger role in any steering committee that's formed. Because this will be a lot more technical in nature. So we're, we're thinking about how to structure that right now. But the planning and zoning commission will likely have a, have a larger role with this next phase.
Thank you.
Yep. Seeing no more hands. The, Colin?
Are we just, is this just an update today? Do we not need to do anything or propose anything and then?
No, nope. It did, it is just an update. You know, don't, don't get nervous because the final report will be two hundred or so pages or, or more.
It's right about two hundred pages right now.
Once you get it.
Yes, yes. The, the meat and potatoes of the report is more like fifty, sixty pages and then it's all the appendices.
But yeah, as you go through over this next month, we'll talk some more in February. This, this does not need any official approval by planning and zoning or city council. So the, the project management team is just presenting what we found through the whole process and going from there, if you will, so. Well, thank you all. That, that was, that was great. We appreciate your feedback as well. So moving on to the next agenda item is the city center redevelopment rezoning with John Voparow.
Thank you, Wade. Let me begin to share my screen here. Why is that not working? Oh, well. Okay, I'm having problems figuring out how to make it bigger, but I think this will work.
Can you hit the, can you hit the from beginning slide at the left and?
See what happens.
Doesn't happen, okay.
Yeah, some, there's something technical there that I'm not getting, but I think this will still work. So we kind of left off and I had shown you, we had talked a little bit about parking and I had showed you a couple of different parking comparison charts and there was a lot of different comments and I still have some work to do on that and I hadn't been able to get to it yet. So I think we're going to start tonight from the next topic, which is bicycle parking. And this was flagged in the TRIBAS report that we, hopefully it was in your packet. But I was, I was kind of dumbfounded about it. I didn't really understand why this was such a problem, what our code has had for bike parking. Bicycle parking standards were introduced into our zoning code in A5. It's currently one bicycle parking space per two residential units and one for commercial, one bicycle space per ten required vehicle spaces or a ratio of one space per thirty five hundred square feet. And it, that didn't seem to be like all that space hugging or, you know, sucking up a lot of space. And I went to some of my current planners and asked them about bicycle parking and how some of the new apartment buildings were handling that and if they had any pushback or any problems with that. And they told me that they had absolutely no pushback or problems of these apartment complexes providing this parking. And so I asked TRIBA architects for further insight into this and they revisited this issue. And they got back to me saying they no longer believe that that is a problem in our MUB1 zone district or it's an impediment to a city center redevelopment. And so our recommendation is no change. But I think I will throw this open, just get people's feedback on it and see what you have to say about it.
John, I don't see any hands.
Okay. If anyone wants to come and revisit that again, please let me know, but we'll just move on from here. And we'll talk about residential density. And the 2013 Inwood Light Rail Core Stationary Master Plan recommended establishing a maximum residential density standard of a hundred and twenty-five units per acre at Inwood Station. Based on our recent apartment development density, staff also believes that we should probably also establish a minimum density. And based on some of the developments we've seen, that might, a good number for that might be seventy-five units per acre. These two standards will be applied to properties within the Inwood Court Station Quarter Mile Walk shed, not outside of the, unless Park and Zoning Commission has some other ideas about that. So here on the left-hand side, I have shown you some different developments in Inwood and show, and I show you what their density is. So the Art Walk Apartments at 801, that's at forty-seven units per acre. The Bell Cherry Hills Development is at seventy-two, seventy-two units per acre. Oxford Station comes in at seventy units per acre. And are the Live Apartments at 201 Inwood Parkway, it's a fairly small parcel and thirty unit apartments. And that ends up calculating to a density of a hundred and twenty-seven units per acre. And so our staff recommendation, we think at the stationary, we want to encourage, we want to make sure that there's a higher density there that in order to best utilize and make the most of the station. And based on the original recommendation of the stationary master plan, we're suggesting to go with that as a hundred and twenty-five units per acre. And as a minimum, we would go, we would suggest seventy-five units per acre. And in terms of the LNR Pars Partners Parcel, which is the south half of the block of the, I believe it's the Office Depot and the Harbor Freight area of that particular block, they would be allowed to do, if they were, they have, that would be a three acre parcel there. And at a hundred and twenty-five units per acre, that, that would yield a total of three hundred and seventy-five units, which is in the ballpark of the three hundred and fifty plus or minus apartments that we had originally agreed to. And so at this point, I would like to get the conversation started and let, and ask people how they feel about these recommended densities in regards to the other examples that we've shown.
Colin?
I think I remember in some of the initial conversations, they felt like the Art Walk was really not dense enough for the location of where it is. So it sounds like, if I remember from previous conversations, the forty-sevens way, way too low. I guess my question is, how is the Oxford Station density working out and, you know, parking requirements and things like that? Are they having, you know, I don't know that the, this is really tied together, I guess. Is there overflow issues on parking? That's really more parking issue, but is the number of people there, are they feeling like they're at the right density with that development that you've heard of?
So as I, as I recall, the Oxford Station, their parking that they provided was at maybe a little bit over one per spa, per unit. And in terms of parking, I really do not know if they, if they are including that in your, the, the straight rental for the unit or if that's an additional charge and if you don't have a car and don't want a space, you don't have to pay that additional charge. That'd be very interesting to find that out. There, I'm kind of thinking that may be the case because there is a certain number of people who, who are, seem to be living there at that development, who are parking on Navajo Street. So there is some people parking there. I also have, at the next meeting, I will be able to share with you a report that RTD just came out with, where they have done a survey of a number of different apartment complexes that are within walking distance of light rail stations. And it's very interesting to see what the parking utilization of these apartment complexes are. I think you'll find it very interesting once we delve into that report.
Noel?
Is there a reason that we use the units per acre measurement as opposed to bedrooms per acre or, or something else?
I think the units per acre is what is typically used in land use planning. I've really never seen bedrooms per acre used as a density measure.
Daryl?
Yeah, I guess I had the same question. I was wondering about the units per acre metric because obviously that's going to make a big difference depending on, you know, if you have larger units or multi-bedroom units and how many people is, is really, you know, obviously what, what we're getting at is people that we want, not necessarily units. So I did wonder about that. I was kind of surprised too to see that something like the Art Walk, I have such a doesn't score very highly on the units per acre. Do you think that's mainly because of a lot of open space? Because of, because I know that, you know, the units are big, especially in Oxford Station, they're quite small and it's still just a little bit smaller than your, your minimum metric. So curious about that.
So yeah, the Art Walk, it's all surface parking. It's, and it's not tucked under anything. So it, there's just a large area within, in the walls there. When you're looking at it on an aerial photo, you see this huge parking area. So the other ones, like the Bell Cherry Hills and the Oxford Station and Live Apartments, they're, they have some type of first floor parking underneath the units. So they're better utilizing space that way. And that's kind of the difference.
Do you know why? I'm sorry. I was just wondering, what, what, I mean, obviously these ones that are just under the minimum could easily, I would assume could easily be tweaked to meet a, a minimum metric. Obviously, they wouldn't have to going forward, but, you know, if, if, if they were redeveloped under your standard, is that correct?
Can you rephrase?
Well, I'm saying, this would not, this would be the new standard going forward, so it wouldn't apply to the existing units. But if, if these units, if the standard was established and these units were being built, given that they're so close, they could, you probably wouldn't be hard for them to tweak to, to make that standard.
Oh, yes. So with the Art Walk, I've always thought that there would be an opportunity there because of that really large area inside the four walls of the complex that is devoted to parking that if they, if the owners of that property wanted to densify that site, they could build a tower in, under, in between those four walls and that open that space above the parking and, and significantly increase the density of that project.
What, what, what kind of, I mean, I assume, you know, if we changed the code, it would, it wouldn't apply to these existing units. Would there be a way to motivate like something like the Art Walk to do that? I mean, is there a way? Or, or would this be, would this apply to them?
No, so they could stay this way they are as long as they want to. But if they, but let's say if the, in thirty years that the place was really obsolete and somebody really wanted to do a newer project, nicer project, and they wanted to demolish the Art Walk, then they would be held to a higher standard and would have to meet the minimum seventy-five units per acre in their design.
Colin?
And maybe just to follow up on that, is the density though of Oxford Station, are they feeling in Bell Cherry Hills for that matter, do they have good tenant occupancy? Like are they, is that a good density for these developments? Have you, have you heard anything regarding that?
I, I believe that they are pretty high, highly occupied. I, you know, if you go on their websites, there's not a, there's a, there's a certain amount that are on the market for rent, but my guess is their occupancy is pretty high based on just because there's such a shortage of housing in the Denver metro and people are moving here all the time and rents have been going up steadily. It, it's a pretty tight market.
Sorry, Diane? Diane, did you have a question? I saw your hand.
Yes, can you hear me? I was on mute.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, sorry. A little bit to Noel and Daryl's questions. I, I am curious how we determine what is the ideal kind of activation of the retail? I mean, I feel like, I guess my question really is why, why a maximum of one twenty-five? If Live Apartments is one twenty-seven, I mean, do we want to be a little more flexible for potentially greater density? So there's more activation on the street? I'm just curious, the reasoning behind the maximum. I mean, I'm sure we, is there like a height requirement or height limitation? And how does that relate to what we would think would be the ideal kind of number of people on the street activating the street?
So I'll just, I'll just talk a little bit more about the original stationary master plan. We hired Crandall or Rambla out of Portland to help us with that, with that plan. And they had, it's one of their, kind of their bread and butter was to do these stationary master plans. They did most of the stationary master plans in the Denver region. And so I'm, I'm thinking they have done a lot of homework in terms of what kind of density could be achieved with a certain kind of building form and in a suburban area that, you know, might be sensitive to height. Obviously, if in downtown Denver, if you have some of those larger condo buildings they've developed in recent years will way outstrip this kind of density. That may, that may be a little bit much for Inwood. But we believe that based on what we've seen from LNR and for SKB, we believe that this is kind of about the level of density that they are thinking about. So we think it matches up pretty well, but if, you know, I have some other slides here after this that we start looking at the possibility of building height. Just for your information, we haven't seen anything much more than from LNR SKB envisioning any more than six stories in height. However, Dan Perembah asked me to take the group's temperature in terms of height to see what your appetite for that would be. So that in case things change, we kind of have a good feel for what, what potential height you might be comfortable with. And if, if that turns out to be that you're much more comfortable with a lot more height than we currently have, which is a hundred feet, we, we may think about adjusting some of these numbers.
John, I don't see any more hands. I think you're good to move on.
Are you going to take the temperature now or later?
Yes, I think the next few slides are about, well, what time is it? Does anybody? Yeah, we still have some time, I think. So I think let's get into that next portion of the presentation and let's begin taking that temperature. So as I said, what we've seen from SKB and LNR and TRIBA architects is their thinking is this would probably be stick-built construction over a concrete parking podium, five to six stories tall, up to seventy feet. However, at many Denver metro light rail stations develops are choosing to build taller. Our current MUB1 max height is one hundred feet. However, the Chase and the Wells Fargo Towers are ten stories and approximately a hundred and twenty feet. The M1 and M2 zone districts in the medical district area, they feature varying height zones that allow for a maximum building height of a hundred and forty-five feet for portions of the Swedish campus as well. For portions of the Swedish campus as well as south from the campus to US Highway two eighty-five. And the tallest building in Inglewood is the Waterford condominiums at fourteen stories and a hundred and seventy feet tall. Uh, so I went around investigating what's going on at a number of different stations around town. Uh, so here at Colorado Center, which is at I twenty-five and Colorado Boulevard, uh, the tallest building in that development is an office tower that is fifteen stories and two hundred and ten feet tall. Uh, this one is at, one is one Bellevue Station located at I twenty-five and Bellevue Avenue. Uh, this office building is fifteen stories and a hundred and ninety feet tall. At the Denver Housing Authority site at Tenth and Osage, uh, this particular building is eleven stories and a hundred and forty feet tall. This is a proposed development. Uh, this is at Broad, at the Broadway Station at uh, I twenty-five and Broadway called the Santa Fe Yards. And this is not built, but they're proposing ten stories at about a hundred and thirty feet tall. Uh, this is at Ninth and Colorado. This is not a light rail location. Uh, however, it is a uh, high-density uh infill location, the former University of Colorado uh, University Medical Center site. Uh, this is the Theo Apartments, and this building is at nine stories and about a hundred and fourteen feet tall. And then this slide uh kind of gives you the feel of what we've got going on in Inglewood. We have the Waterford at fourteen stories, about a hundred and seventy feet tall. Chase Tower, ten stories and a hundred and twenty feet tall. Uh, the Kent Place Development at University of Hampton, uh, seven stories and eight five feet tall. Uh, the Cherokee Kivas condos at Kenyon in Cherokee, seven stories, about seventy-seven feet tall. And finally, the live apartments is five stories and about sixty feet tall. And then this last slide kind of puts it all a little bit in perspective. And so I start on the right-hand side with the live apartments at sixty feet. And this kind of shows you the progression of the different heights and kind of how that looks relatively speaking. Uh, our maximum height today in M U B one is at this current Brookdale and Meridian height, they're a hundred feet. However, there are a couple buildings that are at a hundred and twenty feet. And that's my last slide. And so uh, this is where uh we start taking the temperature and see what people might be comfortable with in regards to height here at Inglewood Station.
Kate Fuller?
Um, so a few weeks ago at a steering committee meeting, we actually talked about the heights of buildings and I had Googled the Chase Building. And according to Google, it is like one forty-one. Do you know if Google is wrong or if our data on this spreadsheet's wrong? Because it does feel taller than one twenty, so I just kind of wanted to see if that might be wrong.
Uh, I got that from some kind of, I can't remember what the name of it is, but there's some kind of website that has that you can look up a lot of different buildings' heights. And that was what they had, and I remember, I remember that you had mentioned that a hundred and forty. Uh, I kind of went over to that building because I was wondering about it myself and I kind of visually, I got into the, the, the stairwell, the fire escape stairwell, and you kind of see the, the full length of a floor there, and they looked like they, it looked to me just eyeballing, I didn't measure it with a measuring tape, but it looked like twelve-foot floors.
Yeah, super tall ceilings, because I toured it one time, and I was impressed by how tall the ceilings were.
Yeah, yeah, and uh, with ten stories, that seems to be compute to a hundred and twenty. So I'm kind of more inclined to think it is a hundred and twenty rather than a hundred and forty.
Colin?
Uh, so I think you said some of the um, initial proposals from uh, SKB uh have limited to six stories is is that what they're thinking for the bulking that, that is working for them and, and that return? Um, and I think we were saying, as Dan was saying, what if they changed that? Um, I mean, I guess uh, obviously uh, they're gonna usually want to put as much density as possible. Is there a reason why they haven't gone taller than six stories so far?
Uh, I think it, it, it has a lot to do with construction. And the, it's kind of with the type of construction they're looking at, which is the stick built over a podium. Um, it, that's kind of been thought of as the, about how high you can go. I think sometimes that it's possible to go somewhat higher ne- in recent years. Uh, but not a whole lot with that type of construction. You really to go, so some of these other buildings that I showed you, like the big office buildings are using a, a, a much different type of construction. It's a much more expensive type of construction. Um, typically steel and concrete.
So you'd probably almost have a jump from six stories. So like, if we're gonna do that, we're gonna need to go to ten stories or something like that to make the numbers work.
John, it's Dan. Let me just throw in a comment on that. I, you know, I think I would just uh, generally advocate for taller, taller and more dense. From a couple different perspectives, generally, it's quote the right thing to do is to put density at multimodal locations. Uh, from a social equity, you know, efficiency, all kinds of perspectives. The other thing that I think, you know, we're dealing with as a practical matter is uh, you know, our discussions with both SKB and L and R are really in a state of flux. They're trying to evaluate how COVID is impacting, you know, what they want to develop, and in fact how they proceed. So I, I would say that we want to maximize the flexibility uh, in terms of developers and development styles. And that is definitely leaning towards taller buildings. One, one of the things John and, John will probably talk to you about is many of these buildings now are stacking that the habitable portions of the building on top of their garages. Whereas before they were putting the garages uh below grade, very, very expensive. So they figured out some really nice ways to architecturally treat above-grade garages and then put the habitable portions on top, which really raises the, the height. Uh, it also does some nice things in terms of allowing more smaller um, development parcels. Uh, so more flexibility. And one of the things we've seen happen around town is just what, what was described in terms of, you know, first generation of developer does a four-to-six-story building, and then very quickly you see it move up. Uh, in some cases, the next generation is, you know, ten to twelve stories. And this is happening more quickly at uh TOD locations uh than anywhere else. So just from a general perspective, I wouldn't get too um too directed by what L and R and SKB have talked about in their initial you know, their initial planning, because it, they could change pretty quickly. Just a thought.
Uh, Noel?
Uh, I just wanted to say that I think, yeah, let's go as dense as possible right by the light rail. Whatever they put there is gonna be around for many, many, many years. So, yeah, I guess that's as simple as it is in my mind, is the denser the better.
Daryl?
Yeah, that's uh, by my thought as well. I mean, I thought um, this is probably one of the best locations outside of downtown Denver for a, a tall building like this and probably in a place where um, it's least likely to block people's views and um, I would never say there would not be any objections, but less objections uh than, than you might think. And um, I think, you know, I think we should make this uh, um, an area that's desirable for developers for this kind of thinking.
Uh, Diane?
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Oh, man, I could not agree more with what you said, Dan. I, I think from a social equity perspective, the public transportation aspect here is critical and going higher. Again, Daryl hit the nail on the head. I, I think this spot being so close to the, to the highway makes it the perfect place to put a tall building. I think that Theo building is actually a fairly good example. Um, I think like from most angles, that stacks really nicely. It doesn't kind of impose too much, you know, and it's, it's a pretty handsome building for new construction and you know, it's got a sprouts coming up there. I mean, there's definitely like animation coming in there. So I, I would also, I, I would defer to you, Dan, on this, but I would think that if we go to a steel and concrete construction, that sort of implies that we have to do it a little bit nicer, which not to grossly increase the cost of the rental unit, but just you know, it's a sturdier building. It's, it's a little bit nicer building, which hopefully would increase its longevity.
Those are all the hands that I see. I don't see anymore, John.
Um, so um, is the group leaning towards going to this left-hand side, right immediately at the station at two a hundred and ninety feet or something similar to that? Is that what I'm hearing?
Uh, just to jump in, I don't think I saw these, these slides in our packet. Would it be possible to send those to us as well so we could look a little more closely? I don't, I don't want to say a specific number, but I definitely think higher is better.
I can send those out. Yes, if John can send those to me, I will send those out. Yes. Uh, Colin?
And I guess maybe following up eh we're just talking about the height, like should there be trade-offs for height that, you know, there are more affordable use houses or affordable units or something along those lines, or making sure that we have that activated space beneath it? I mean, it's one thing just to put the height up, but you know, as Diane said a couple times, like, what's the reason people are going there? What's, you know, how do we um, the try to push um, or tie those together to, to make sure that we're creating a space and not just um, a building? But I'm in support of going higher.
Uh, I'd throw out a quick answer on that, and I mentioned it before. Uh, we're gonna, we're gonna have agreements in, in place that in addition to, I think, the overlay that John is envisioning, the combination of the two, I think, lets us address a lot of those subjective elements in terms of activation, you know, uh uh, mixes of housing, affordable housing elements, uh, et cetera. And so there, there will be a number of tools in addition to the pure uh underlying zoning to try to um, get, get to those goals.
I don't see any more hands, John.
Okay, well, that's all I had for you prepared, so um I guess we're gonna break it off. Uh, I will be uh feverishly working on the next uh, iteration of this presentation for you, and hopefully we can pick it up there in the first week of February. And I will stop sharing my screen. Maybe.
You're okay.
Okay, there you go.
So I came late to the meeting. Daryl, are you running the meeting?
I am. Well, if I can pull up the screen here, let's see here, let's see.
Whoops, you just muted yourself. I believe the next item on the aden- agenda is staff's choice, correct?
Uh, that's what it looks to be.
Thank you. Wade said he didn't have anything. John or Dan, do you have anything?
I have nothing.
Okay, Daryl's still muted, so I'm gonna move along if you don't mind. Councilmember's choice? Anybody have anything? Okay. Dugan?
Uh, I've got nothing tonight.
Okay, Daryl, you're still muted. Did you have anything else? Okay, guys, if you're done, I'm gonna call meeting adjourned. Take care. I'll get, I'll get the uh PowerPoint uh sent out to you hopefully tomorrow.
Thanks and, and farewell, Daryl.
Yeah.
See you, Daryl.